Good evening. If you're here, you are at the council meeting and it is actually October the 14th. Mr. Smith, would you please lead us in a pledge of allegiance? Thank you. This is actually our scheduled meeting since yesterday was Columbus Day. Mrs. Rossmarin, the roll call.
Mr. Arnold.
Here.
Mrs. Fenderbosh.
Here.
Ms. Gentry.
Here.
Mr. Cos.
Here.
Mr. Shamir.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Zuber.
Here.
Mayor Spetzel.
Here.
Law Director Ebert.
Here.
Finance Director Crossy.
Here.
Public Works Director Liskovic.
Here.
Thank you. Do we have approval of the minutes? Does anybody see any changes that they would like to have or additions? Seeing none, they will stand as published. Thank you. Now it's time for correspondence. Mrs. Rossmarin, do you have correspondence you want to share?
The one correspondence I did receive was from Kim Orlovsky and I believe she also copied everyone else on that in reference to the collective committee meeting last week. And I just wanted to make reference to that.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry, the council went first. I'm happy to let them go, please.
Someone else down here?
So I received a petition from the residents on Gregel and Maple Cliff regarding their roads and wanting to have the repairs done to that road. I know it's on Mr. Liskovic's list, so.
And this is part of the Avon Lake Regional Water Storm water, rather drinking supply water repairs?
That's part of the issue, but not in its entirety.
But so that Mr. Liskovic will be working together with Avon Lake Regional Water?
Correct.
Very good. Mr. Shamir, I saw your hand.
Yes. I have two communications. The first was sent, an email was sent by a resident, Mr. Ted Clay, regarding a concern about Lear Road and the condition of the sidewalks. And what the gentleman mentioned was that there is a young lady who is wheelchair-bound and every time that she's traveling between Eastview and Division Road, she almost bumps out of her chair and that needs to be addressed. She had submitted, the gentleman had sent the information to the city and had received no response, so I'm just bringing it up. That's, and then the next one is-
Sir, if I could just stop you.
Sure.
Is that on the east side or the west side of the street?
Not sure. So that's the-
Because the reason I'm asking is because we do have some tribute issues there at the sidewalk and so I just wanted to make sure that Mr. Liskovic has that written down to look at. Thank you.
Yeah, but it's in the sector between Eastview and Division Road.
Yes.
The next item is a resident on Brunswick Drive had issues with their tree lawn and the topsoil that was put on there and the level of grading that was actually done. I went to the sites, we walked, they had come back, the contractor had come back in and regraded, but the soil that was put on was full of gravel and clumped clay, which was pretty hard. So it didn't look like topsoil or anything that would grow on there. He also mentioned the condition of the road. So we walked the section of the road that is installed just in the past few months and what you do see is a lot of cracking due to construction activities. So if they are not addressed or repaired, they could cause the deterioration of that road a lot earlier than possible. I'm more than happy to walk the section with you and we can go through it, Mr. Liskovic. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you. And I know I received some emails in my area for the road work and they're working internally with Mr. Liskovic and with the administration. And Mr. Liskovic, I think they're all but one has been resolved and one is still in process with sprinklers is being resolved.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else now to my left? Council first. Okay, Mr. Mayor, go ahead.
Yeah, I received the same communication that Councilwoman Gentry received regarding Maple Cliff and Gregel. I've already spoken with Avon Lake Regional Water and as you know, they do bundle projects in which they repair water lines and sanitary if needed and we would do storm and roadway. So we've already talked with them about the next bundle project that comes up adding that area to that. Also, I want to respond, if I could, to Councilman Shamir's comment. We actually did go out and take a look at that. We've identified five or six locations that need to have sidewalk repairs. He made notification to those residents, including Butts Plumbing, and so that is already in process.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Shamir?
This is also the sections of the road in the middle of the road where there is actual chunks of concrete that has come off and-
Sidewalks or roadway?
This is that.
I'm talking about Lear Road.
Oh, Lear Road, I'm sorry.
Lear Road sidewalks.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
And you're on Brunswick.
Yeah.
Okay. Any more discussion on sidewalks? Let's keep it on one topic for a second. We're good sidewalks? Yes, Mr. Shamir?
If I can just provide a point of clarification, when we get complaints on sidewalks such as the one that Councilman Shamir mentioned, so when you get a resident complaint like that, by Ohio revise code and by our city ordinances, the maintenance of the sidewalk is a responsibility homeowner. So the initial go-to, as the mayor had alluded to, goes to the property maintenance inspector. And so then that's how that is processed and funneled through to get a resolution on those one-off complaints like that.
Thank you. Any further discussion on Brunswick so we can put the both of them to bed here? No? Okay. All right, very good. Any more correspondence from anyone? Seeing none, now we're going to move on to public input and members of the audience are permitted to speak once, up to five minutes on any topic per our code section 220.21A1. Thank you. Would you like to come forward, sir?
I'll be brief. Bob Huffer, Sunset Road. I wanted to talk briefly about ordinance number 25161 and it sounded good during, we've been coming to some of the ad hoc meetings, and it really did sound pretty good. I have a short terminal across the street and I have a short terminal to my right four houses down. The one part of the ordinance is that a new air B and B or short-term rental could be 1,000 feet from the last one, which is right across the street from me. I walked it off. That's seven houses. So all I would do is like to proposal, maybe someone have an amendment to make it like 1,500 feet, rather than the seven houses. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Can I stop? On any topic? Good evening.
Gerald Phillips, Avon Lake resident for 20 years, certified public accountant and a concerned citizen. For those citizens of Avon Lake who are watching, I urge you to watch a program on the cable TV for the city. It's about rural water, I mean, not rural water, but our regional water department and this proposed 6119 Clearwater, which I call Dirty Water. There's a two-part series that Mr. Zimmerman and I have done and we've gathered enough information that we're going to do a third part. So I urge you to watch it, otherwise we may lose control of our wastewater treatment plant. Now, you know, Mr. Monroe and Mr. Zuber, you know, indicated that I was telling lies. Well, not really. It was a slip of words. Rather than free water, they're getting free sewer treatment, okay? Because they owe the city $15 million, LORCO, which is the entity that's going to be one of the partners in this Clearwater. And, you know, in 2023, they owed us 13 million and they get treatment of, you know, approximately $100,000 to $150,000 worth of revenues that they bill their customers for, okay? But we don't see a penny because that receivable keeps going up and up, okay? So free sewer treatment for everybody in Avon Lake, maybe we should ask for that too. Not water, but sewer treatment. They also indicated that there was some rumors flying around about the board, a three-member board with Avon Lake Two and the county one. And the people at LORCO at the meeting Mr. Zimmerman and I attended, they said, "No way. No way is that going to pass." Another idea being floated out is the five board, I think Mr. Shamir. So the people at LORCO weren't too happy, you know, as far as representation. I want to talk about First Amendment rights and the onslaught of First Amendment rights in the city of Avon Lake. And it's all occurred in the last couple of years and it's occurred because myself and Mr. Zimmerman come up and try to educate the public and people on council don't like it, you know? But, you know, our founding fathers created the First Amendment and it's included in our Constitution of Ohio, Article One, Section 11. And public officials can't violate our civil rights. Section 2921.45, Ohio revise code, interfering with civil rights. No public servant under color of the public servant's office employment or authority, that's you, shall knowingly deprive, conspire, or attempt to deprive any person of a constitutional or statutory right. And whoever violates this section is guilty of interfering with civil rights, a misdemeanor of the first degree. You can't control content. I can say, "I don't like you." I can say, "I think you're a terrible council person." I think, I can say, "You're bad, ugly, a criminal." I have that right. I do. You may not like the content, but you can't control it. You're proposing rules that there's no personal attack. Who's going to define personal attack? The president of council based on what she thinks? No standards? Clearly illegal. Clearly illegal. So I hope you adopt it because you're going to be in court. If you're not, you're lucky you're not in court already, but you will be. You pass this, you're going to be in court. Guaranteed, you know? Residents, that's what type of council you got now. They want to silence you. They don't want, they don't want you to speak. They don't want you to get information. They want to operate in secrecy. No transparent government in this city of Avon Lake. I have never seen anything like this and I've been in many cities advocating public records in open meetings. It's a shame that I live in Avon Lake. Thank you.
Anybody else like to come forward on any topic?
So I'd like to show a video before I begin.
No, sir.
So again, you've denied me the opportunity because there is no law in the books in regards to the charter saying that my public speaking time can't be used to show a video. Correct?
It's in Chapter 220 that we adopted, sir.
No, you haven't adopted it yet.
We have adopted it. It's already in place.
Well, all the more so that means the 20 other times that I've asked in the past year, you violated my civil rights every time. I'm glad you pointed that out.
It's a limited form here, sir.
No, it is not. It's freedom of speech. So again, to Ms. Crossy, I'd like to ask for Todd Davis agreement and his overpayment. I've made public records requests with you in the past. I still don't have that information. Okay? Thank you. So as Mr. Phillips indicated, we went to the LORCO meeting, it's all the way down in Spencer, and had conversations with people there. A lot of farmers there, they want nothing to do with this 6119. They're in one already, but they don't want anything to do with Avon Lake and Vermillion and the other parts of the county. They made it abundantly clear they are not in favor of it. Which I find interesting was the fact that we also discussed that the Avon Lake Regional Water passed it five to nothing on their vote. So their vote, they want to give it away for $2 a year and do all these things that are required as part of it, but instead, these people should be appalled that they did that, that they voted that. They not care about the citizens of Avon Lake, the health, safety, and welfare? Citizens of Avon Lake, please watch Concerned Citizens. We have a two-part series on 6119 and it talks about this. And I know we're supposed to be voting here shortly and two of the people are running unopposed for the water company, so there's no way to remove them. But these are the same people who voted five-nothing and didn't care about citizens of Avon Lake and what would go on. Need to understand that they're now representing our best interest. They're trying to be in cahoots with commissioners because they have a plan of trying to make a mega site in the middle of the county down by the airport. They think that they can draw a large manufacturing, chip manufacturing, some kind of manufacturing plant. Now, Intel was supposed to be building one in New Albany down by Columbus. That project's now been put on hold for five years. So I don't know how they're going to find somebody that's willing to do that, to take up the thousand acres that they want to have at their disposal. The other problem is the 67 million that the county just got from the Ohio Mannings were able to help move money into our direction. But the 67 million, part of that's going to be for a sewer system that runs 10 miles south of Vermillion's plant. So they were trying to create Avon Lake Regional Water on the east side, Vermillion on the west, 10 miles worth of sewer. But oh, by the way, there's a developer who wants to put in a 300-home development, which just so happens they need those sewers so they could tie into it. So the 67 million will help put in that infrastructure because the developer has a relationship with one of the commissioners. I think this is astounding. Mr. Phillips tells me it's called quid pro quo. I think you've heard those say, those words before. So it's not my surprise. Anyhow, my time's almost up. Again, make sure you vote and quit electing idiots.
Anybody else like to come up for any topic? Seeing nobody approach, we will then go on with our reports. The first report is going to be from the mayor.
Thank you, Madam Council President. There we go. So this Friday night is Avon Lake versus Avon in football. Kind of a big deal. Leading up to the game, there's a friendly competition between our two communities to see who can donate the most food by weight to CRS. They're also accepting cash, so if you donate a dollar, that's considered five pounds worth of food, so donations can be taken directly to CRS or any school in Avon Lake. The winner will be announced at the halftime of the game this Friday. So obviously, it's a friendly competition between Avon and Avon Lake to see who can raise the most food for CRS. Great cause, hope you all can participate in that. I'm just going to say that we had a very successful Boo by the Woods. I'm sure Mr. Cos will enlighten us further about that. We also had a very successful homecoming parade on Saturday, the 27th, which was followed by a very successful Fall Fest that went until 1:00. Both were extremely well-attended, largest crowds we've had. The weather had a lot to do with that and just a great time was had by all. And I want to reiterate that Trick or Treat is Friday, October 31st, from 6:00 PM to 7:30 PM. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any comments? Any questions for the mayor? All right, then we'll move right along to the council president's report. The next CCM is going to be October the 20th and the next council meeting is going to be October the 27th. Any questions for Council President Fenderbosh? The other thing I would like to mention is that this past Saturday, we did have a budget meeting and it was well-attended by our residents. November the 8th is going to be the next budget meeting. It's open to all the residents. It's here in the chambers from 8:00 until 12:00. The topics will be recreation, engineering, public works, and some additional departments if time allows will be presented in by the mayor, building, human resources, and law. Okay? That's the end of my report. Any questions? Okay, we'll move right along to the law director and his report.
No report this evening, Madam President.
Thank you, sir. The finance director?
No report this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, madam. A public works director?
Yes. I'm sorry. Yes. Do you have some things to update this evening? Bear with me a second here. Yeah, so I'd like to lead off with an update on Walker Road Phase Five project. Intermediate course was installed last week and the construction zone was shifted over on Friday. Monday, they milled the southern side of the project and we've run through the proof roll and preparing for the widening of that, that part of the project, which will be, those are the, you know, upcoming items with that project. Next is the update on the Alps project. So lots been going on, some pretty transformative changes. We've got all the structures in place for the shade sales and those have been installed. Contractors preparing for the asphalt fitness trail that's going to go around, around the project for, to be installed this week. And then we're still waiting while they're, while they're working on grading and other site work, we're still waiting on a balance of smaller features to be installed early November. Just a quick update on the Edgewood Outfall Project. We are looking for a bid opening this Friday. As it stood at the end of the day today, I believe we had either eight, somewhere between eight and nine plan holders, which is very positive right now for a good price on that project. Next up is Columbia Gas just sent me over some notification for the Streets of Britannia and Regency Court. They're going to be replacing just over 2,200 feet of main and impacting about 18 residents in that neighborhood. They're looking to start their work sometime in the week of November 10th with an expectation of three weeks to get all that work done. They will be providing notices to all the residents impacted like they normally do along with their typical communications that they push out through their social medias and such like that. The next big one, I actually, I'll kind of wrap up with the next, probably the big hot button item is leaf collection season starts on Monday, October 20th. Crews will be starting on the east side of town and we'll be working systematically towards the west. And once we complete a cycle, we'll restart the cycle again at the east. I'd like to offer just some guidance to not mix branches and sticks in with your leaf piles. Please keep those separate. They do slow down the process of leaf collection and they can potentially damage or cause downtime for the equipment that's collecting the leaves. Also, I'd like to stress, do not place your leaves in the street. It has many different implications, from potential implications of stormwater to vehicles parking over them and catching on fire. So please keep your leaves on the tree lawn for collection. And I just wanted to point out, you can check the website daily for the updates of what's been collected that day, which will give you insight of where we're heading next for the next day. Those maps will be updated daily, just like we did last year.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Liskovic?
And I had one other thing.
Go ahead, sir.
Which kind of, kind of parlays with leaf collection. So during leaf collection season, our brush collection service does become limited because the trucks we typically use for brush collection are also our leaf trucks. So they, we've got about, it's probably a solid eight, maybe 10 weeks, 12 weeks, depending on how season goes, of leaf collection. If we do have the ability with manpower and equipment to run brush truck, we will, but our priority right now is, is leaf collection. So just, this is not new, I think, to the community. It's something that was conveyed to me when I took over and just relaying just the operating practice.
Thank you. Now, any questions for Mr. Liskovic? Seeing none, we're going to move on in our agenda to the standing committees. The first one is Building and Utilities. Ms. Gentry, you have a meeting tomorrow night?
We do. It's at 6:00 tomorrow. We're talking about the city hall updates and the status of that building, also discussing facilities, condition, assessment plan to hopefully get into the budget next year. And a couple of other things are on the agenda.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Gentry? Mr. Zuber?
Yeah. Ms. Gentry, since you're like our liaison to municipal utilities, if you could, I don't know if you could do it at the meeting tomorrow, but at a future meeting, have Mr. Monroe give to you the water and sewer charges for the people in the city of Avon Lake, just so that we can let the public know what our rates are compared to many of these other cities. Because I know in the past, Avon Lake is maybe the lowest water rates in the state of Ohio and almost the lowest sewer rates in the state of Ohio. But if you could get him to bring a breakdown or support or give it to us or the committee and then you report on it, because I think the residents should know how good they operate as far as for the citizens of Avon Lake and where our water and sewer rates stand to the rest of the people in the state of Ohio.
Yeah, I was going to plan on following up with him tomorrow, so I'll get, I'll try and get that for the meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Okay. Anything else, Ms. Gentry?
No.
Okay. We're going to move on now to Mr. Shamir with Communications, Environmental, and Recreation Programming.
So I do have a number of items. First of all, EAB has elected a chair and a vice chair earlier today, Mr. Krieg as the chair and Mr. Potrizeba as the vice chair. So that is done and they had a special meeting today with sufficient number of members to move that forward. Furthermore, I have a presentation that I'd like to put up with respect to the environmental data that was supposed to be shared with myself and the council. And this was an agreement that was made last year, about a year ago. So I have spent the past six weeks trying to get environmental data with respect to the power plant and where the progress is. And what I'd like to start with-
And I know you'll probably deal with Mr. Shamir a little bit differently just because of the information. It's going to be more technical that goes to him.
Yeah.
But from our standpoint, you know, that's what I'm looking at, is trying to get, whether it's through your committee or some other way.
So with Councilman Shamir, I assume that he will be working alongside us in real time as we do the evaluation. And so we are happy to provide updates as frequently or infrequently as you would like to see. And typically, what I would do is identify milestones or check-ins. You know, we don't want to just share information that's not-
Okay. That effectively is from 10/21/2024. I have additional, if you like, from October 7th and October 15th, which effectively is the same, same issue. Now, since September 4th, I have been trying to get information on where this program, where the progress is. So I've requested NFA outline that was shared with ALERG, work program that Verdantis and Deegan agreed upon, data quality- Deegan agreed upon, data quality objectives, reports result of historical releases, and status of where we are as a whole. So that is my email. And again, I have gone back and forth, submitted additional emails, and I received an email that Mr. Gross had tried to get in touch with me or he has been on travel. So this has gone back and forth between the administration, the consultants, and myself. Now, on October 6th, I received, well, I sent an email, a formal email, asking where we are and that no one had tried to contact me. And I had a reply which went like this, that I was supposed to be in touch with him at 11 o'clock on Thursday last week. And the information was relayed to the mayor and I missed, well, I have been asking for this information now for six weeks, frustrated and quite disappointed because my job in this whole deal was to be working along the consultants to understand where we are, what information was requested and the reason. And this was agreed, as you noticed, by the video of the 21st of October of 2024. I received this that, okay, we're in the process. And my response was, you know, for six weeks, I have been trying to get a hold of you and hold of this information. So finally, finally, on October 9th, I received a meeting request, which I had a video conference with Mr. Gross and Mr. Todd Davis. Fundamentally, I had quite a few gripes. We had an agreement and I heard a lot of different things. Well, we got to get permission from the administration. We got to get permission for this, or we didn't think that you wanted it. And it clearly states that I was to get the information and I was supposed to be able to get this process firsthand, not for it to be chewed and then submitted to me as what they want me to hear or what they want me to listen to. You know, I agreed hesitantly to this process because there was going to be transparency. However, every meeting, I asked a question because the first time we went through this at the Avon Lake Regional Water Purchase of the power plant coal yard, I got literally rambuzzled. So I have the videos and the clips at every council meeting where I have asked and there has been corroboration that, yes, we are going to share this information with you. So my question to the administration, why is it that I have to go and jump through hoops to be able to get information? This is unacceptable behavior at every level. I don't have time to be running around because either there is a lack of comfort with me getting firsthand information or something else. However, what was interesting in the discussions, there are bi-weekly meetings between Deegan and Associates and Mr. Gross. So guess what? There is a venue when there's discussions. However, I have been clearly removed from that chain. So yesterday, there was another promise that, oh, we're sorry, we're going to get you involved. This is not going to fly. So I request that all the emails, and again, all of this is under the NDA, the nondisclosure I have said that I will abide by from day one. I want all the emails, all the communication that has taken place from day one between Mr. Davis, Mr. Gross, and Deegan and Associates and ALERG with respect to this submitted to me. So this is the venue that I am putting it out and I will report on it, whether I have received information or not, on a weekly basis. I am done with being run around, you know? I heard something this past week. I went to Mr. Lee Fisher's inauguration as president of Walden Wallace. And he said, you know, his favorite cartoon was the Flintstones and and I too love the Flintstone. But what he mentioned hit clearly close to my heart. He says, you know, the saying with the Flintstones were yabba dabba doo. You know, I hear a lot of yabba dabba, I don't see any doos. And I would recommend that if we're going to do this, we actually commit to doing it. The do part is actually very important. And yes, I am frustrated and you could hear it in my voice. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm going to reiterate, we have a public records request from Mr. Shamir. And Mr. Shamir, I'm going to go through it to make sure everything is included, sir. You would like to have all the emails and communications from day one from Mr. Davis, Mr. Gross, Deegan and Associates, and ALERG. Have I left anything else, sir?
No, that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, do you want to respond, sir?
Well, there's this one I want to respond to, Mr. Shamir, another email that was in the mix. I don't know if he put it up on there, but I'll read it. Councilman Shamir, I assure you, this is from Todd Davis, and I believe all of council was copied on this. Yes, they were. And it reads, Councilman Shamir, I assure you, there is no effort to do anything other than to be absolutely transparent with you. Both Steve and I have been traveling extensively during the last 21 days. I will return to town tomorrow and will work with Steve to coordinate a time for you to talk directly, which I believe you referred to happened. While I apologize for slight delays, there's simply not yet that much additional information to provide. Nonetheless, whatever information we have, you will have absolute have access to. And we all have access to a portal that is under the NDA that everybody can have access to and take a look at, see what new information is there. I've asked Todd Davis about this. He'll be here later today. We can inquire further, but he's indicating to us that ALERG has not been populating that with recent information. So I hear you. I understand what you're saying, but I have to leave it to Steve Gross and and Todd Davis to provide that information because it's nothing I have access to. But I assure you that they've heard you loud and clear. I've talked to them about it and I hope that we can move forward on it. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to go back to Mr. Shamir for just a moment, sir. Mr. Shamir, do you have access to the portal and is it working for you?
I do have access to the portal. I have gone through it. The information that I've requested doesn't require ALERG to submit. This is the analysis done by Verdantis. It is not brain surgery. Fundamentally, what I've asked for is the work that they're supposed to be doing and relaying to ALERG and Deegan and Associates. Now, I did receive the email from Mr. Todd Davis as well as Mr. Gross that they're not trying to avoid the question and they're trying to be transparent. However, I will say this, I hear a lot, but I don't see anything. So it goes back to the yabba dabba doo. Let's do instead of just talk about it. I understand that 21 days that we're traveling, six weeks, six weeks, and it took yesterday for me to have a conversation with Mr. Gross. Six weeks, and in that six weeks, they have had meetings, whether by phone or else, between Gross and Deegan. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any further comments on this topic? Okay, I'm going to come back to you, Mr. Shamir. Anything else from Serp?
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just one one comment that you had made, Council President, that the records he's requesting are not public records. They're records under the NDA. So I just don't want them.
Correct.
Public to be misinterpreted that these are records available to them. It's not a public record.
No, it's not.
But it is available to you.
You're right. I I said it was a public records request. It's not a public records request. It's a request under that he is that he is permitted to have NDA. Thank you. Thank you for the correction, sir. Mr. Shamir, anything else?
I actually do.
I think you do.
We have a resolution coming this evening, 25-160. It's a resolution of the city of Avon Lake supporting the Ohio Commission for our nation's 250th anniversary of Declaration of Independence, and that will be on an emergency basis this evening. And the other item that we've got that is coming just normally is Resolution 25-162, which is adopting new rules and regulations for Avon Lake TV. Thank you.
Any questions from Mr. Shamir on either of these topics? Okay, thank you, sir. We're going to move on now to Mr. Arnold with economic development. And before you start, sir, thank you for telling us which one was going to be suspension of the rule, emergency passage, if council members could do likewise, because this is the only time you're going to be able to talk about suspension of the rule before the vote. Mr. Arnold, go ahead with your committee report, sir.
Thank you. I have no formal report tonight. The next the next meeting is Monday, October 20th, and it'll be at 5:30. There is one item on the agenda tonight, which is ordinance number 25-161 regarding short-term rentals here in Avon Lake, and I'll discuss more at that at that time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Arnold? Mr. Shamir?
I do have a question, and Mr. Arnold is here as well as Mr. Isburn. So the question actually is with respect to the ERR, the Economic Resiliency Project that was completed last or this year. And I did not notice any funding in the budget cycle for the follow-up to that program. And I'm wondering if that is something that's going to be dealt with next year or how it's going to be funded. Thank you.
Good question. Mr. Arnold, do you want to start? Do you have any answers to that?
No, I don't really have any comment on that. I had to lead the budget meeting early on Saturday. I don't know if the mayor has any mayor Ted has any any comment on that. I know that the budget's stretched pretty thin and I'm just wondering if there's any money available.
So economic development was not on this past Saturday's agenda. It is coming up though. Mr. Mayor, do you have a comment?
I believe it's coming up at the last budget meeting.
Correct.
Yeah, so we haven't gotten to that yet. Obviously, to put anything in the budget, we have to have a complete plan on what we're hoping to accomplish in '26. As Councilman Arnold said, the budget is extremely tight. I'll let Finance Director Crossy confirm that for me, but I believe that's where we're at. So while we could bring forth some ideas, I don't know whether they could be funded or not, and I don't have an exact amount at this point.
Thank you. Mr. Zubor saw your hand.
Yeah, if we could have that put on the agenda for the CCM next week, talk about the resiliency study and if Mr. Arnold could put it on his agenda for the meeting next week that you're having, so we can have some more discussion on that. Because I think it's something that we need a little bit more clarity on as far as what type of council action also is going to be taking on accepting the study and some of the different things we could move forward. Maybe we could go over some of those recommendations. We've talked a lot about the CIC. I know I've talked to several people that have talked about possibly wanting to be on the CIC. And just if we could have that put on those two agendas for next week, I'd appreciate it.
Okay, so noted.
Yeah, are you talking about a committee meeting?
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah, we can do that. Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Arnold. Any comments from Mr. Isburn? It's been answered? Okay, great. Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Shamir? With your, okay, anybody to my right? No? Okay. All right, we're going to go to finance. Mr. Zubor?
Mr. Chair, the finance meeting did take place last week in these chambers. We had several items that we did discuss. First is the license plate fee increase that passed out of the committee to move to the CCM, a $20 increase in the license plate fee. We're going to have discussion on that on next week's CCM to talk more about that. We had a discussion on the procurement policy, not much of a discussion at all, just that there's continue updating. It's hopeful that we can have that final product available at the next finance committee meeting. Talked about the comprehensive liability insurance that was voted out of the committee to be passed on second reading, which would be in two weeks from today. We have first reading on that item later in the council meeting agenda. And I think that probably the finance director will talk a little bit more about that. We see we did see a small increase percentage-wise, but when you look at all the different things that we had added into it when they went back and looked and reevaluated a lot of the buildings and the new vehicles that we had purchased, that caused a little bit more of an increase. A lot of that was due to municipal utilities, however. The income tax report, the first of October, we're 4.2% ahead of last year, which was a record year, $652,000 ahead of last year. The total brought in so far this year is $16 million. Fee schedule increases, we just had a roundabout discussion on that, knowing that in the future we are going to have bringing forward a lot of fee increases, probably pool increases and other increases. As the mayor stated at the meeting, ours are probably some of the lowest fees that of any city in the area. And we just went over a list of the dates and times of the budget meetings. Our next meeting will be November 3rd at 6:00 PM in the council chambers.
Thank you. Very thorough. Anybody else have a question for Mr. Zubor?
I'm sorry.
Oh, yes.
Correction. November 8th is the next budget meeting.
Okay, I was talking about the finance committee.
I'm sorry.
Thank you. Mr. Smith, I saw your hand up.
Yeah, I just wanted to make it clear that in the event that the license plate increase does happen, it was discussed a lot during this finance committee meeting, that any money that that would be generated by it, that would be used for the improvement of the roads. So I just wanted to be clear on that in terms of, you know, as this is being discussed and going out, just wanted to be very clear that that's what it would be used for. Thank you.
That's correct. And Mr. Zubor, right now, the city has $5 on there. It's been on there for a long time. Is that correct?
Right. I think that that's been since we've had the ability to do that.
Correct, correct. Any further discussion?
And I thank Mr. Smith for saying that because I did not go into detail because we've had so many discussions on it, so.
Thank you, Mr. Zubor. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Anybody else? Okay, we're going to move along now. Crossy, anything else on this? Okay, all right. We're going to move over now to Mr. Smith with human resources.
Thank you, Madam President. Human resources met this evening. We had several items on the agenda, two of which were discussed regarding the sign shop operator job description and the VAC door operator job description. And after discussion regarding those, it was determined that in order to maintain our obligations under the union collective bargaining agreement and to provide optimal services to the residents, that we would have those as emergency with the suspension of the reading. They have been approved by civil service, so we will be suspending the rule and considering both of those as a emergency measures. We also discussed the Assistant Public Works Director appointment, which is an appointment being done through the administration of a gentleman by the name of? I know it. Roman Duku, I think, is is correct. He has been in that position for 120 days as an emergency appointment. He is going to, he's been offered the job on a regular basis, full-time basis going forward. He's done a very good job, according to Mr. Liskovic, the mayor. He's been in that position. He gets along well with everyone, will be a benefit to the department. And the administration has plans on hiring him within the parameters of what council has set forth in terms of a job description as well as the salary ranges. His salary will be $103,950 annually. That offer was sent out by the administration and it's been accepted by him. Again, that was within the budget and also within the parameters of our of the job description that we put. job description that we put forward. Uh, at this point, if there's anything further that either Mr. Liskovic or the mayor would like to say, uh, they can certainly jump in.
Thank you, Mr. Liskovic. Anything else that you wanna add?
Um, honestly, I think Councilman Smith kinda covered it all pretty well, but, uh, again, um, you know, the, he, he's been here just short of a hundred and twenty days, uh, was able to come in, hit the ground running with his experience and background, um, and to be a, a positive influence and asset for the department.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor, anything further?
No, I agree with everything was said. He brings decades of experience from Lakewood and, um, has brought new ideas and, um, has already, uh, in his a hundred and twenty days created efficiencies within the department, so I think it's a great hire.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any further discussion? Yes, Mr. Shamir?
I had the pleasure of having an interaction with the gentleman and during, uh, the city's and emergency response action for the, for this bill, and I cannot say enough on his effort, his demeanor, so I think, uh, a wonderful candidate. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else? Ms. Gentry?
I just wanted to ask a question about one of the positions. Are we there yet, or is that next?
Um, we are with, uh, the report from the department, I mean, from the, from the committee. Do you wanna hold it until we get to the actual legislation?
I'm sure.
Or do you want it now?
I just wanted to know what a vacor is.
Oh, what is a vacor? V A C T O R. Mr. Liskovic?
Yes.
Share with us what a vacor is.
Yes, a, a vacor is a, is a very expensive asset of the city's. It is a combination sewer truck, so it has the ability not only to vacuum out, uh, storm sewers and manholes and stuff like that, but it also has the ability to jet and do all that at once and also contain all the debris. So, uh, it is, it has got some complexities to it and, uh, definitely requires a, a higher level of skill and knowledge to operate it.
And does that run year-round?
Uh, it does not. We are limited in winter time because it runs with water. Um, and then as staffing permits, we've, we try to run it as often as we can, um, working through various areas. I'm sure Councilman Shamir might have seen it floating around in the west winds as we've been, uh, working through Brunswick and Trade Winds and some of those streets, uh, and flushing the storm sewers, cleaning the catch basins and, and working through those areas.
And when, um, so this job description is for a, a vacor operator, does, um, if they're not working in the, if that doesn't run in the winter, is he working on other stuff?
Oh, absolutely, yes. Absolutely.
I figured, but I just wanted to make sure that it's clear in, in the job description that there are other activities.
No, I mean, every, every employee that comes into, whether it's City of Avon Lake or any other community, they, they start out as that laborer role, and then you just build on top of that. So, you know, this, this builds on top of a laborer position, so they'll, you know, as, as an example, in the winter time, they'll be plowing snow or clearing sidewalks or, uh, doing inside maintenance and repair projects, um, stuff like that.
I just wanted to understand, 'cause I know, um, union contracts and things that I don't understand them, so haven't, wasn't participating, so I just wanted to make sure that there wasn't anything that prevented them from doing other stuff.
And actually, as we refer back to the union contract, um, we're a little bit behind. Should've gotten it into place, uh, with the agreement of the union in April. So, we are catching up and we're getting it, we're getting it done right. Um, the gentlemen that are doing these jobs have been doing them for a long time, and it's time that they are recognized for their expertise. Okay, moving right along to Mr. Koz now with Public Safety and Health.
Well, I wasn't done.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
You weren't done? Oh, I'm sorry.
Civil Service Commission, uh, updates were discussed in the Human Resources Committee. Um, and, uh, they have a meeting scheduled for November fourth. They also have set forth, uh, several dates for a hearing regarding, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the matter that's been appealed to them. They have firefighter paramedic test, uh, scheduled for November twelfth at six P M. They, anyone wishing to, to be involved in that has, uh, time to come in and, uh, fill out the application through the end of this month, Halloween. Uh, they've, and then the police have been doing lateral interviews, interviews, and, uh, finally, uh, with, again, with Civil Service, seasonal workers are certainly, they were discussed, I believe, earlier today, but, uh, there is still time to become a seasonal worker for the city, which helps tremendously, particularly during leaf season. And if you are interested, you certainly can call, uh, to the City Hall, but call down to Public Works, and that telephone number's four-four-zero-nine-three-zero-four-one-two-six. So if you wanna be a seasonal worker, uh, looking for some, some extra money for Christmas or the like, I would say, uh, call four-four-zero-nine-three-zero-four-one-two-six. Uh, and that's, oh, the next meeting of, uh, our Human Resources will be at six o'clock on November tenth. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I'm so glad that you mentioned about the open positions that are seasonal. We need about four more, so if people wanna get busy and, and contact the public service and the Public Works Department, we would appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, now, Mr. Koz, it's yours, it's Public Safety and Health, sir.
Yeah, thank you, uh, Madam President. Uh, the next meeting of the Public Safety and Health Committee will be a week from today, October the twenty-first, twenty-twenty-five, at five-thirty here in the council chambers. Um, I hope to have an agenda, uh, out to everybody by this Friday. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions to Mr. Koz about his committee? Seeing none, we're gonna move on now to Public Service, which I chair. Um, the next meeting is going to be November the fifth. It is a Wednesday. The public's always welcome to come. And we have four items that we're gonna be asking for suspension of the rule, emergency passage on. The first one is twenty-five dash one-five-seven. Um, I'm gonna point out that this is an amendment to a previous ordinance for snowplow and ice purchase, and the reason why we're redoing it is that, um, the estimate was made, the quote was made in one quarter, we're in another quarter, and the price went up, so we need to be on top of that. Um, the next one that I'm gonna be asking for suspension of the rule is twenty-five dash one-five-eight. It's amending in an ordinance for Manic and Smith, and, um, what occurred was that in our original ordinance, we failed to put in the price not to exceed one-hundred-and-fifty-seven-thousand-one-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars. Um, the next ordinance I'm gonna be asking for suspension on is twenty-five dash one-five-nine, and, um, one-five-nine is amending an ordinance, again, for Manic and Smith. Um, this time, not only is the amount four-hundred-and-eighty-six-thousand-six-hundred-and-seventy-nine dollars, but we're adding sixty-thousand-six-hundred-and-sixty dollars for dedicated plats, and this is per the Ohio Department of Natural Resources sidewalk project and their standards. This is on the west side. Um, the next one is twenty-five dash one-six-five, and, um, that is going to be by emergency passage, suspension of the rule, and we have a repair emergency. And I know that you've heard me talk about the H V A C system, the boiler in the Safety Services Building, and that the gas gets blew and some pipes need to be replaced, and we fixed them, and some more blew, and we fixed those. This is another set that is blown, and we need to fix them so that the occupants can have heat this winter, and I will be talking about more of it at the time that we come to it. So that should be giving us the four, one, two, three, four. Any questions? Seeing none, we're gonna move along now to, um, Mr. Smith again with Planning Commission.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, Planning Commission met on, uh, October, October seventh. Uh, there were, there was only one item on the regular agenda, and, uh, what that was, was a, a request for rezoning, which is on our agenda tonight as a first reading. And, and that re, that rezoning is, uh, not to be alarming, is from B two to our one-A. It is across the street basically from the Drug Mart parking lot on Moore Road. Uh, there's some property there that, that the owner, Rotz Investments, have been trying to put some commercial property on there and been having some trouble. So it's gonna end up being four lots. Uh, they wanna put, uh, four standard, uh, R one-A single-family residence homes there. Uh, the, it is just to the north of an existing business that is there, that, the last one I remember was Hoben, uh, exterminating, but it, uh, Hoben direct, lines up directly across the street from the Drug Mart parking lot. Uh, so this was passed by the, uh, by the Planning Commission, and, uh, it seems like it's a reasonable request from him, which should not, uh, affect anything relative to traffic or the like. Uh, in fact, uh, we get it away from business down there. There was also, uh, a...
If we could hold off here. Any questions on that particular one? Because typically, there's, as you have said, there's, there's not an alarm being raised at all. Typically, if you're going from a residential to a business, people are concerned, but going from a business to a residential zoning, typically there aren't complaints.
And I will try to explain it more, uh, at the next CCM, if we could put that on the agenda, and maybe I'll go up to try to use the fancy stuff we have.
Thank you.
Um, next, after that was a work session, and there were several items on the work session. One was, uh, Eliocium Cafe. Uh, they're asking for a potential rezoning over there, but that, again, is only to expand within their property to have a restaurant, um, in that, in that position. For all of you at home, it's where, as we grew up, where the Red Store is, or was, uh, that people remember, uh, going to get candy and would like to live down in that, uh, part of, that part of the city. Uh, currently, they serve coffee, and to the back is a, uh, is a building that they would like to transfer or turn into potentially a restaurant. So there was a lot of discussion had about that in terms of traffic and the like, uh, so we'll see how that, uh, but that was in the work session, and so that doesn't mean that that's gonna happen right now, but it's something to think about. Uh, it's over there near Jake's, uh, and there were a lot of comparisons made, uh, to Jake's at the time, um, but there was some concerns over parking and where the parking would be and moving those around. So that was one item that will probably be coming back. The, another item, which will, uh, definitely be coming back, is the Calvary Court subdivision preliminary plat, so it was there for a discussion. This is a parcel that is to, in the, uh, it's in the Ward One, and it's, um, right in the, uh, the south, it would be the southeast corner of, uh, Lear and Krebs, uh, behind, uh, there's a couple houses over there on, uh, on Lear Road, but it's behind there, and it was interesting, parts of the, parts of this request is, uh, is fine, but they wanted to bring out some, some residences to this, to the north of, uh, of the houses that are there, and there was much question about those, so, uh, I'd, I suspect that, uh, there'll be some changes in that one. I don't know if the mayor agrees with me on that, but, um, I, I expect some changes. So with that, I'm just doing that as a report that that property is being, uh, looked at and potentially developed, uh, so I will not be using the fancy machine at plant, at the, the next meeting. Uh, they also discussed, uh, who are they going to appoint to the eight, to the Historic Preservation Commission, and, uh, then the last thing was, uh, a thing called the Soul Smart NOPEC, which has to do with some grant money, uh, that might be available for, uh, energy savings. Um, and that was just discussed, uh, really relatively briefly. Uh, so that's all that I have for the Planning Commission. I'm happy to answer any questions. Their next meeting, and I moved my paper, uh, so I can't see, is, is, uh, gonna be, um, what is it? The first Tues, the first Tuesday in November, which I think is November fourth, the election day, and there's all kind of meetings set on that day, which, back in the days when I was law director, we used to try to avoid having meetings on that day, but it seems like everybody's going ahead with them now. So, that's all I have. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Smith? Yes, Mr. Koz?
Yeah, thank you, uh, Madam President. Uh, Mr. Smith, with regards to the, um, selecting the representative to the Historic Preservation Commission, I would encourage the Planning Commission to, um, really listen to Bob Haas or, or wait his, uh, recommendation very strongly. Bob has been a great member of the Historic Preservation Commission, and I think that his recommendation or input would find the right fit for that, uh, Historical Preservation Commission, so I would encourage it to totally lean on it.
They're, they're planning on doing that. They already talked to him about it during the meeting we had last Tuesday.
Great. And then the other thing that I had is with regards to the, um, the old Avon Lake Wine Shop that you were referring to, some of the changes that wanna happen there in that work session. Were there any members of the public, of the neighborhood that were there for that discussion? And I'll, I'll just say why, and I know there will be in the future, but I remember this is probably goes back, um, when Mr. Lieberman was the law director and Mayor Zelka was around, uh, there was a property that sat, a house that sat in between the wine shop and, um, Jake's on the Lake, and they were looking to change the zoning on that to make it a commercial business. Um, and there was, uh, a considerable amount of, um, uproar is not the right word. Uh, there were concern from the residents there about anything that would possibly cause issues in that neighborhood with traffic noise, things of that sort, so I know that they're sensitive to that, so as it, uh, moves forward through the planning phase, um, I would encourage any outreach that you guys can do to the members of that neighborhood.
Yeah, we, we gave, uh, the owners of the property some suggestions on how to handle it, um, and, uh, Planning Commission was very sensitive to it. It is an, it would be really an extension of an, of a non-conforming use that's there, uh, and, uh, trying to figure out parking is, is one of the problems that they're gonna have, but, uh, I think that, uh, I think that they left with a pretty clear understanding of what kinda needed to be done, and, um, hopefully they'll, they'll come back and, uh, you know, obviously, and for those of you who don't know, they were talking about having Italian food in the...
I can hear you.
They were talking about having Italian food.
Pasta.
Pasta, yeah. So, anyway, and probably making it themselves on, uh, at the, at their, at their store. So, it was obviously a, a nice discussion, and we'll see what comes of it.
Um, Mr. Koz, the one thing that is a little bit different from this versus what you and I went through earlier is that, um, the, the owner was looking at purchasing the two empty lots to their south, but, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe the Planning Commission came up with a suggestion that not only will save the money, but will allow that buffer to remain, so that they could still have those two lots behind them, but utilize their land a little bit differently, and they're very much aware that they have to put up greenery around there, um, buffering not just a row of, one row of trees or anything like that. Um, so it's in the planning stages. They haven't provided an application yet. They were just brainstorming about what they could possibly be doing. Anything else?
Uh, Mr. Shamir's got a question.
Mr. Shamir, please.
Uh, with respect to the property of Moore Road and the rezoning, has that property ever been used for anything else? Who owned it previously, if you don't mind me asking?
You know, I only know who the, uh, I, I only know who owned the, where the Hobens is. At one time, Rick Hemmer owned that property, uh, the old gentleman who owned the property, and as for the property that they want to rezon to the north, um, I suspect that Rotz has owned it for a while, but, but, uh, I don't know that for a fact. It's, it's been there for a while. He said he's tried to do something with it for a long time.
So, if, if I may, excuse my, uh, ignorance, I'm, R one-A single-family resident district, would that effectively mean also a basement?
Well, yeah, they, I mean, they, they could put a basement, and they're right there along Powdermaker, is it Powdermaker Ditch right there, I think?
Yeah.
If I could. It doesn't, uh, and R one-A does not say basement or no basement. R one-A has to do with the area size.
Yeah. Well, I mean, the, they, to answer your question, yes, they could put a basement if they wanted to, you know, but he's, his, his indication was that it would be four lots and four houses there, or that...
The reason I'm asking is its proximity to Powdermaker Ditch.
Right.
And the historical use of that, and, and if there is going to be a excavation and putting in basements and, and the concept if they've, if they've looked at the historical aspects and any potential issues, and that's the reason I'm asking. I'm just... I'm just giving you a heads up because I will ask the question-
Well, I, I am sure that that's something where the, you know, there'd have to be easements for cleaning and everything else to be able to get back there down the road when those houses get built or are built. Thank you.
You're talking about flooding, aren't you, sir?
I'm talking about flooding. I'm also talking about historical use of Powdermaker Ditch with releases from industry.
I understand.
So that is the, that's the reason I'm asking the question. Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Mr. Smith?
Mr. Zuber.
Oh, Mr. Zuber, thank you.
Just that there's, that was cleaned not too long ago, that part of Powdermaker, but there also is a tributary in the Powdermaker that runs through the property. The, the ditch that runs through the Drug Mart property, it also runs through that property, so I'm sure they would have to reroute that in some way or pipe it to get it in, but that area was cleaned not too long ago, especially when they redid the bridge.
Yeah, and it, and it's absolutely full of trees right now, too. Okay, that's, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, you have the zoning board.
The next meeting of the zoning board is gonna be Wednesday, October 22nd, at 7:00 PM.
Thank you. Mr. Shamir, you have Parks and Rec?
Yes, the next meeting of Parks and Recs will be on October 22nd at 5:30 in this building downstairs at the first level conference room. And if I also may, I kind of dropped the Communication and Technology Commission's next meeting, which is on October 16th, and that is held at the Avon Lake Library in the basement at 6:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Shamir? Okay, or for Mr. Mayor, I forgot to ask about the zoning. Any questions on that one? Okay, we're gonna move along now to special committees, and I have Tree Commission. The next Tree Commission meeting at the old Firehouse is on the 12th of November, and the public is always invited there. Thank you. Okay, well now we're gonna move along to, yes, sir?
I just wanna let everyone know that the next Walker Road Ad Hoc Committee meeting will be October 22nd here at 7:00 PM. Thank you.
We're hosting at this time. Okay, thank you. All right, now we're gonna move along to motions. Are you ready? Okay. I move that we adopt the Avon Lake Council Policies and Procedures based on Codified Ordinance Number Chapter 220. And in discussion, we have already passed our, our Chapter 220 that talks about council, and it talks about it being a limited forum, that within these walls, within this chamber, we can talk about the time, the place, and the behavior that takes place here. We do not, we do not, I'm gonna say it again, we do not control the topics. People are open to, to talk about the topics, but there needs to be decorum. So what we are going to be passing, what we're gonna be voting on right now is the policy and procedures. We needed to have it in writing, it's part of our rules here in Avon Lake, and it has never been in writing. Now we have it in writing. Talks about the purpose and the scope, talks about council meetings, it gives you the outline of what the duties are, the standing committees, and the ad hoc committees, it talks about boards and commissions, it talks about the order of the business, it talks about ordinances and resolutions, it talks about the public input guidelines, council chamber etiquette, parliamentary authority, and to finalize it up, it talks about, about the voting. So that's what we're gonna be voting on now. Any questions to further discussion? Mr. Cause?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President, and I apologize for not mentioning this last week, for catching this when we were discussing this at the collective committee meeting. A couple of things I just wanted to bring to the attention of my colleagues. If we go to one of, this first one is something just, just to put on everyone's radar. Page two of this, it's another section from the previous page, council meetings, and it's number four, standing committee meetings, and it has in there start at 5:30 or 6:00 PM. So we're gonna be picking up two members, maybe three new members of city council as of January the 1st. We don't know what their work schedules are gonna be or their availability. So by putting it in there that all these meetings have to start at either 5:30 or 6:00, we're kind of putting ourselves into a little bit of a bind if a committee chair comes in and says he or she can't start their meetings until 6:30, or if there are meetings back-to-back and the second one doesn't start until the first one finishes and it's 6:30 or 7:00 in some cases. So that's one right there, that I think we're putting ourselves into a box that, under our own rules, we can't start a meeting at either, something that's not within either one of those times. That's the first one. The second thing that I have, and again, I apologize for doing this now and not last week. I should have brought this last week, and I apologize. The second thing is just a, if we go to public input guidelines, and the top-
What page are you, sir?
Um, let's see, page seven. So if you go down a little bit, and it says consultant or invited guest, I think those should be plural. That's just a pen change.
There should be, it's a typo. They should just say consultants or invited guests.
Correct. And then the third thing that I'd like to bring attention to, and this is one that I really think that we should add a bullet point to this. We do have the section that I said consultant or invited guest may provide factual information or may respond. Great, that, that one is, is fine, but I think that we need to have a bullet point, and I just put some language down for this, that states members of council or the administration may respond to questions or comments from the public at the discretion of the presiding officer. Because the way that this reads now is if a member of the public were to come forward and ask a question, the way that this is, only invited guests or consultants may respond. If it's a question about something in Ward 4 that could be easily answered, and the council president or presiding officer could turn to the person that chairs that committee or in that ward and get a simple answer for that person, we're not permitted to, the way that it's written.
Let me read it so that the public understands what, how it reads right now, with the typo of the S. Consultants or invited guests may present factual information and/or may respond to questions from members of council, the administration, or staff at any point during the meeting at the discretion of the presiding officer. And what Mr. Cause is recommending is that we add one more bullet point, and it would state that members of council, the administration, or staff may respond at any point during the meeting at the discretion of the presiding officer. Correct?
Yeah, that, that's fine. And the other reason that I put the public in here is because it's under the public input guidelines. So because it's, this is falling under public input guidelines, that's why the bullet point that I mentioned stated, members of council, members of council or the administration may respond to questions or comments, and I think staff is another word as well, too, because the clerk of council may be the one that needs to respond to a question if she has the answer. So members of council, the administration, or staff may respond to questions or comments from the public at the discretion of the presiding officer.
Law Director? What are your thoughts?
I would agree with that, because it's normally when you want to answer the question while it's being brought up to the council right and after.
Okay, and we have a comment down with Mr. Smith?
Yeah, I think it's already there. First of all, these are guidelines, and second of all, it says questions, and on the second bullet point on the, on page seven, says questions and any responses, if any, are all included as part of the speaker's allotted time.
And again, this is not 220. This is simply the policies and procedures, because we have it very much outlined in 220. Mr. Cause, go ahead.
Yeah, thank, thank you. And normally, I would agree with you, Mr. Smith. But it wasn't, what, an hour ago, we were told we were gonna get sued again when we adopt this. Put it in writing, make it clear that we can respond.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Smith, rebuttal?
Yeah, I mean, the more, I mean, we can only put so much in writing. I mean, there are Robert's Rules of Order, and, you know, obviously, the, the chair has control of the meetings and really can make those decisions as we go, but I'm happy to put that in there. I think it's superfluous and not needed, but that's fine by me.
Any other discussions we have? Mr. Cause, you had one more, didn't you?
No, ma'am, that was it.
Okay, so what I'd like to do, if you don't mind, since we're still in discussion, I'd like to go back to page two, understanding committee meetings, start at 5:30 PM or 6:00 PM. That's what every single one of them are right now. And perhaps what we need to do is simply to add a bullet point, or maybe we have to add in there, depending upon the availability of council and staff. Because the reason why we went early was because staff is here all day long. Not everyone lives in Avon Lake, and for them to hang around until 7:00 PM for additional meetings is quite difficult. And so that's why it's at 5:30, 6:00. And we can always, it's fluid. They could always change it. Does anybody see that we have to have, do we need to add anything there? Mr. Smith? Do we have an opinion?
I do not, no, thanks.
Okay. Anybody else have an opinion?
Yeah.
I see a hand somewhere. I saw, there it is, Mr. Zuber.
Yeah, I, I think that we should, we don't have to approve this tonight. I think that we could talk about it again on Monday at the collective committee meeting, and then pass it again, then pass it in two weeks. I see my colleagues down on the other side dotting their head. So I don't know, Madam Chair, if you want to withdraw the motion, or we vote the motion down and just put it on the CCM for next week, because there's, I mean, there, I think there's a lot of different issues that, that we could probably go over, and we can hash this all out next week and then pass it cleanly, so we're not sitting here on the floor adding this bullet point or changing that thing. I just think it would be simpler and easier to do it that way.
I agree. I'm, I have a motion on the floor, and I think that the cleanest thing would be for me to remove the motion. Is there, but before we do that, so we can get a pretty good direction, for Mrs. Ross Maron, who types everything up for us, is there anything else anybody would like to add on page seven? We're going to have consultants, guests, that's a no-brainer. I agree with Mr. Cause that we need to have another bullet point.
I support that.
Okay. So at this point in time, we have a motion on the floor, so I'm going, as a sponsor of the motion, I'm going to ask to rescind that motion. Mrs. Ross Maron, the role?
Mr. Smith?
Yeah.
Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
Mr. Arnold?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosch?
Yes.
Ms. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Cause?
Yes.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Thank you. It is passed to rescind. It'll be back at the CCM next week. Okay. We're gonna move on now to the next one, and let's, hopefully the next one's gonna be easier. I move to adopt the council chamber policies and procedure based on Codified Ordinance 220. In discussion, this is a one-pager, and if passed, this will be printed on a very large poster and framed, placed here in the chamber, and it's the policies and procedure for public input, for council etiquette, for council procedures and decorum. Any further discussion on this one-pager? Looking to my left, looking to my right. Mrs. Ross Maron, the role, please.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
Mr. Arnold?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosch?
Yes.
Ms. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Cause?
Yes.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Thank you. This one has passed. Moving on to the next motion, Mr. Cause?
One second.
Mr. Cause, you have a motion?
Yes. I move to accept the donation of a 2014 Ford Explorer Police Interceptor with 123,565 miles. VIN number, okay, these readers. 1 FM 5K 8A RX EGA 92076, from the Southwest General Police Department, to be used for range training.
In further discussion, sir?
In further discussion, this was an item that came through the Public Safety and Health Committee. It was discussed at the collective committee as well, too. This is a donation of this vehicle, as I mentioned. This will not be used on the road. It is at the end of its useful road life, and it's being donated to our Avon Lake Police Department for use in range training.
Any further discussion from anyone? Saying none, Mrs. Ross Maron, the role?
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
Mr. Arnold?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosch?
Yes.
Ms. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Cause?
Yes.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Thank you. This has passed. The next motion. I authorize the Public Works Director to dispose of obsolete or surplus equipment. The Public Works Department is detailed in Exhibit 1 and filed with the Finance Director. In this further discussion, we have a collection of items that we no longer need, that we no longer use, and usually they go out to auction, and we're able to find homes for them and then also increase our revenue. Any further discussion, Mr. Liskovic?
No, nothing at this time.
From anybody else? Mr. Zuber?
Yeah. Beth, could we get a copy of all the different entities that we can use for disposal of this equipment? If we could just, I just want to get a list of them. I mean, I don't need it tonight, but, you know, over the next few days, if you could just email that.
And if you could just email it to everybody, then everybody has the same information. And everybody has with them the list that we're looking at right now. Basically, that is a five-ton dump, a dump truck with snow and ice package, a 133 side style pickup truck, a five-ton dump truck with snow and ice package, a five-ton dump truck. These are all out of service. A five-ton dump truck with snow and ice package, a five-ton dump truck with snow and ice package, a truck, a one-ton pickup truck, three-quarter ton Super Duty, a one-ton Super Duty, and a wheel loader. And they range from age from 1985 to 2013. Any further discussion? Mrs. Ross Maron, the role?
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
Mr. Arnold?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosch?
Yes.
Ms. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Cause?
Yes.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Thank you. This has passed. Now we're at legislation, third readings. Mrs. Ross Maron, can you read by title only? Ordinance Number 25-148.
An ordinance designating the red aircraft worn in beacon formerly mounted atop the Avon Lake Power Plant Smokestack as an historic landmark.
Mr. Smith?
I move the third reading of Ordinance Number 25- I have 148.
In further discussion?
Yeah, this has been discussed and been through three readings. It's the beacon that was here, was atop the Smokestack, it's a part of Avon Lake's history, and, and I think that's, everybody's well aware of what's going on with this, so.
Could you move for passage, sir?
I thought I did. I thought I said I moved the third reading.
You third, yeah, you moved the third reading. I move for passage of, please, sir?
Okay, I move for passage-
Thank you.
-of Ordinance Number 25-143 on its third reading.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Mr. Cause?
Yes, thank you. I'm just very happy that this has reached this point. This was a lot of work to preserve as much as we could from the Avon Lake Power Plant, and I really have to, once again, just thank the group of residents and non-residents. A number of non-residents came together to help preserve a lot of things from the Avon Lake Power Plant. Our small little group that was working really hard on this, I want to mention them, Mr. Chuck Frye, Bobby Rudge, William Rutger, who was the director of the Avon Lake Public Library and recently moved on to a new position in Erie County, Dan Rigato, who was the former plant manager, Matt Severn, who lives out in Lakewood or Lake County and is just a big power plant enthusiast, joined our group, and we worked very hard to preserve everything that we could. And the idea was to save all of this stuff, but the one item that really stood out, that we really thought deserved special recognition, was the item that's up for a vote tonight. And this item is what most people would look at and say, okay, well, that's an interesting piece, but why is it a historic landmark? And I'm not gonna try to redo Tony Tomannick's presentation from a couple of weeks ago that he made to council and also to the Histor, uh, Planning Commission, but that light represents a part of, a large part of- a part of, a large part of Avon Lake's history, our heritage, and has been said a number of times, that beacon is something that all of us looked for when we were flying in. It guided us when we were driving back to Avon Lake, and if you're out on a boat, it guided us onto shore as well, too. It really called us home, and that's the reason that that one particular piece, maybe more than all the others, is representative of that power plant in that period of time. So, I'm happy for the, that we're going to get a chance to dedicate this. It is going to be housed at the Avon Lake Public Library, and it'll be available for public viewing at some point in the near future, should a new location be determined. With that, with more of the artifacts, that is the intent, but the Avon Lake Public Library is going to be the caretaker of that. I must note that with landmarks, there is a, there is a portion in the, in the code that states that they cannot leave the city without authorization from the Historical Preservation Commission. So, this landmark is here. It's not going outside of the city grounds without specific approval. So, it is here to stay. It is a part of our history, and it is one of only two remaining in existence. So, I want to thank the Historical Preservation Commission, the Artifacts Group, the Planning Commission as well, too, and City Council. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Koz. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Rossmarin, the role?
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
Mr. Arnold?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh?
Yes.
Ms. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Koz?
Yes.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Thank you. This has passed. Mrs. Rossmarin, read by title only. Ordinance number 25-151.
An ordinance approving the improvement plan for Avon Center Estates, number two, phase six, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Smith?
Thank you. I move for the third reading of ordinance number 25-151 for passage.
In discussion?
Yes, this has been before us on several other occasions. It's the, it's in the very southwest corner of the Legacy subdivision, and it's there as an emergency in order to be able to start getting some tax money and be able to get properties delivered to folks in a timely fashion.
Thank you. Any further discussion from colleagues? Seeing none, Mrs. Rossmarin, the role?
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
Mr. Arnold?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh?
Yes.
Ms. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Koz?
Yes.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Thank you. This has passed. We're down to first readings. Mrs. Rossmarin, read by title only. Ordinance number 25-156.
An ordinance approving a contract for comprehensive insurance coverage for the city of Avon Lake to Jackson Deacon and Associates and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Zuber?
I move the first reading, excuse me, of ordinance number 25-156.
In discussion?
This is the comprehensive insurance policy for the city of Avon Lake, which expires on the 31st of October. This was voted out of the committee, three to zero, to be passed on the second reading in two weeks. So, it goes into effect prior to the November 1st date when it starts. We're going to have also further discussion on this at the Collective Committee Meeting next week.
Thank you. Any further discussion by anybody? Okay, then we'll move on. Mrs. Rossmarin, read by title only. Ordinance number 25-157.
An ordinance amending ordinance number 25-105 for the purchase of a snowplow and ice package for the Public Works Department and declaring an emergency.
I move for suspension of the rule, requiring three readings. Mrs. Rossmarin?
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
Mr. Arnold?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh?
Yes.
Ms. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Koz?
Yes.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Thank you. This has passed. Mrs. Rossmarin, read by title only. Ordinance number 25-158.
An ordinance amending ordinance number 22-174, a personal services agreement with the Mannix and Smith Group Incorporated, for the LOR-US 6-18.52 Pedestrian Improvement Project and declaring an emergency.
I move for suspension of the rule, requiring three readings. Mrs. Rossmarin?
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
Mr. Arnold?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh?
Yes.
Ms. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Koz?
Yes.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Thank you. This has passed. Mrs. Rossmarin, read by title only. Ordinance number 25-158.
An ordinance amending ordinance number 22-174, a personal services agreement with the Mannix and Smith Group Incorporated, for the LOR-US 6-15.87 Pedestrian Improvement Project and declaring an emergency.
I move for suspension of the rule, requiring three readings. Mrs. Rossmarin?
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
Mr. Arnold?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh?
Yes.
Ms. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Koz?
Yes.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Thank you. This has passed. I move for passage of ordinance number 25-158. And in discussion, this is for the eastern sub, I'm sorry, for the eastern sidewalks, the curbs, that would be in ADA compliance, pedestrian crossings from State Route 83 to Bay Village along Lake Road, in an amount not to exceed $157,185. And this is amending ordinance number 22-174 that did not have the amount in it. Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Rossmarin, the role?
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
Mr. Arnold?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh?
Yes.
Ms. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Koz?
Yes.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Thank you. This has passed. I move for passage of ordinance number 25-159. And in discussion, as you've heard, this is an amendment to a previous ordinance, 2469, and it's for the amount total of $486,679 plus $60,660 for dedicated plats for the Ohio Department of Natural Resources sidewalk project on Lake Road from 83 West. And it is to include sidewalks, ADA-compliant curb ramps, and pedestrian crossings. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Rossmarin, the role?
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
Mr. Arnold?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh?
Yes.
Ms. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Koz?
Yes.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Thank you. This has passed. Mrs. Rossmarin, read by title only. Ordinance number 25-160.
A resolution of the city of Avon Lake, supporting the Ohio Commission for the United States Semi-Quintennial America 250-Ohio, or OH.
Mr. Shamir?
I move for the suspension of the rule, requiring three readings.
Mrs. Rossmarin, the role?
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
Mr. Arnold?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh?
Yes.
Ms. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Koz?
Yes.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Thank you. This has passed. Mr. Shamir?
Yes, I move for the passage of ordinance 25-160, the resolution of the city of Avon Lake, Ohio, supporting the Ohio Commission for the United States Semi-Quintennial.
And in further discussion?
And in further discussion.
Do you have any further discussion, sir?
No.
Okay, so by passing, this is part of an Ohio project, and we will be part of a group that will be able to apply for grants. And this is going to be helping with our marketing of the city of Avon Lake. Any further discussion from anyone? Okay, seeing none, Mrs. Rossmarin, the role?
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
Mr. Arnold?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh?
Yes.
Ms. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Koz?
Yes.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Thank you. This has passed. Mrs. Rossmarin, read by title only. Ordinance number 25-161.
An ordinance authorizing the creation of a new chapter titled Short-Term Rental Properties within Title VI Miscellaneous Build-In Regulations in Part 14 of the Codified Ordinances and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Arnold?
Thank you. This is the first reading of ordinance number 21-161, in regards to short-term rentals here in Avon Lake. Many months ago, a committee was established to discuss any concerns residents have on short-term rentals, better ways we can regulate them in the city. We had many residents come to our meetings, both for and against short-term rentals. My own belief is that there is a need for short-term rentals in Avon Lake. We have about 20 total right now, give or take. So, with this legislation, some of the concerns that were brought up were saturation in neighborhoods. Residents were concerned about their whole neighborhood, or a big chunk of their neighborhood being short-term rentals. Within this legislation, we've limited it to no more than one short-term rental per six parcels or 1,000 feet. Another concern that was brought up was the occupancy of the rental, that there were too many people staying at the rental. And with that, we've also limited it to two, two people per bedroom, as well as two additional people. I'm trying to think here. I don't know if any of my other committee members have any other concerns or questions. I know that this is just the first reading. There might be a few changes to it as we go through the three readings, but I'll defer to Council President if anyone has any.
Thank you. Ms. Gentry?
Yeah, I wanted to ask a question of the Law Director. 1484-02, it's under issuance number four and five. There's statements about the life safety inspection of the residential premises, and it reads to me as though we're implying that that life safety inspection ensures that the property complies with all applicable health, building, and safety codes. I'm not sure if I'm reading that correctly, but I don't believe that life safety inspection is more than just a subset of, I wouldn't suggest that we're inspecting for building codes and the like.
No, but, no, but this was that, one of the items we were going to change, I had mentioned it to Mr., you know, before the meeting, I was talking about that specifically. That section, there's a couple sections that maybe have to be amended prior to this passage.
Yeah, so I see in 1484-06, we do, it is, it describes what that life, life safety inspection is, but I just wanted to see if we can't modify the wording of that, because I, I don't want to give the inspectors more than what they're actually looking for.
Right. When you refer to the section of code, then actually we'll spell it out and take that out. We can change that.
And that was in four and five.
Four and five.
I think you have a really good point, because it also might lead the resident to believe that, hey, it's perfect, everything's good.
That was my concern.
And it may not be.
Right.
And the date that they are inspected, seven months later, there might have been a change also, correct? Right.
I will take a look at that.
Good point. Mr. Koz?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you to the Law Director for doing a lot of the recommendations that were, that were put out. I know one of the parts that we talked about last week, I want to bring this out and say that I like the way that this is written. It's on 1484.05B under records. We had talked about the retention of records for three years or so, and we were first talking about striking that entire section. But the way that this is written is if the platform, which almost all of them do, retain that information, if they don't retain that information, then they have to keep them. So, it's kind of a catch-all.
It is a catch-all.
So, I appreciate that, because if you get a platform that doesn't retain the information, there was nothing that we would have in place to, to catch that information, you know, if needed. So, I appreciate your insight on that, because we didn't think about that last week, and you included that in there. So, thank you. Other than that, I think that this is really well done. I agree with Ms. Gentry on that one point, kind of needs to be, the language needs to be tweaked. I think we know what we're talking about, but overall, I'm pretty comfortable with this moving forward.
Good point. Anybody else? Mr. Koz?
Mr. Zuber?
Yeah. Mr. Arnold, if you could talk at the CCM, not tonight, but at the CCM next week, when we bring this legislation up about what the people in the audience had brought up. I know it's 1,000 feet now, but the 1,500 feet, and if you had any discussion on that in your meetings, if you could, at the CCM, just bring it up at the CCM, and you can go into more detail with it then.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Zuber.
I can bring it up now, if you want, since you're here.
Well, I'd rather talk about the CCM than here.
Okay. We'll talk about the CCM.
Thank you, Mr. Arnold. Anybody else? The only thing that I wanted to ask the Law Director, in the area about fees, are you thinking of not having the fees in this area, but refer the fees over to the general fee?
Correct. That way, if it's changed, we don't have to sit there and forget about changing. All of a sudden, it gets, it's getting mixed during the term.
Right, right. So, when I talked to Senator Manning's office, because I had spoken to House Representative Miller's office, Senator Manning's office shared with me that after hearing about all the life inspections that a community would be doing, that they're now considering, and they being Senator Brenner's office, who is the sponsor of this legislation, increasing that so that they can make cities whole, because there's no way we're going to be whole if we have yearly inspections and we're only charging $50 to register, right? So, that's one thing. The second part of it is, is that they definitely said, they gave me three things, that was one. Number two had to do with the bed tax to be a toll of 7.5%, and that we need to put that in. If we don't put it in now, we'll never get it. When they do pass this, and they're expecting to pass it before December 31st, 2026, okay, so we have some time on it, we need to have a bed tax in there, we will never get it in the city of Avon Lake. And the third part actually has to do with what our residents from Sunset have brought up. They are, before the city decided to do this, if we would have waited on the state, the state would have said that there's absolutely no interference at all with short-term rentals, and that they can do whatever they want, okay? Now, they're at the point where they say, "Okay, the cities can put together what we've done." But they, they really are going to challenge us if we put any kind of a restriction in, no matter how many feet or how far apart it should be. They want it to be an open marketplace. So, I'm just throwing that out. We are a charter community, right, Mr. Mayor? And perhaps we could do our own thing, and if they challenge us, they challenge us. But we have until December 31st of 2026. Okay, any further discussion? Mr. Eber, I think you've done a great job putting everybody's comments together in here. Oh, Mr. Smith, hello?
Yeah, I think since these folks are here, I would like to hear, since you brought it all up and talked about the charter and everything else, what the, what your thoughts are with regard to their comments on the thousand versus 1,500. Thanks.
Sure. We talked about, you know, how far we wanted to keep the, the short-term rentals apart from each other. There was another neighborhood that came by, I don't know, maybe four or five months ago, that, that discussed this, that they were concerned about one short-term rental could possibly buy another one next door to it. And that's why we came up with, we felt like 1,000 square, 1,000 feet. We started with linear feet, but we moved to 1,000 feet from any point, any one point off the property line, whatever's greater, whether it's 1,000 feet or six parcels. And us as a committee, we're all pretty in agreement on, we felt that that was fair. It was fair to the, the short-term renters. We didn't feel like that would jeopardize any neighborhood, that make it feel any less of a neighborhood if they're, if they're separated by six parcels or 1,000 feet. So, that was what I would say. And we, as I spoke to a couple that raised it last time, too. He had just brought up to me that it's tonight about 1,500, and we felt like it with 1,000 feet was, was good.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Explanations? Discussions? Okay, we're going to move on then. Thank you. Mrs. Rossmarin, read by title only. Let's see, where are we? Resolution number 25-162.
A resolution adopting the Avon Lake Community Television Rules and Regulation.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes, this is the first of three readings of Resolution Number 25-162.
Thank you. In discussion?
Yes, I would like to ask Mr. Rua to give us a bit of history and intention of this document, and this is one of the reasons that we are going through the full three readings, so that everybody understands why and how this document has and was developed. Thank you.
Mr. Rua?
So for many years?
Introduce yourself to the public.
Oh, I am Robert Rua, I'm the Communications and Technology Director here at the city of Avon Lake. The reason that we are looking at this document this evening is Avon Lake Community Television has served the community for many, many years, the city of Avon Lake, and has operated under a set of rules and regulations that have not been brought to city council. This document is in substance very similar to the rules and regulations that have been used for quite some time. So there's a few things that I want to point out that are different, though, however, about this version of the document. One is it looks a great deal different than what our longtime community producers are used to. The reason for that is that we have tried to make this document a little more user-friendly. It is actually a document that is used all the time, whenever we're talking with residents who want to become community producers. So what we've done here is created introduction that explains a little bit about why the stations exist, and what their purpose is, a mission statement which underscores that purpose, and a section that defines some of the terms that we use throughout the document to make it a little bit more easy to use. And I think the key, one of the other key features I want to point out is that just it is now, this information is now presented in sections, which hopefully makes it easier to facilitate when there are questions about a specific policy, or the way we handle, you know, eligibility to become a community producer, which is reserved for Avon Lake residents and organizations. Last but not least, as far as substance goes, there are two things within this document that are different, that I want to call out. One is, we, for many years, have included some language in our rules and regulations regarding underwriting. It is not something that comes up very often. My understanding, my staff members have been with the city for quite a bit longer than I have, and none of them remember an instance where we've had to address an issue related to a community producer having, you know, come to an agreement with an underwriter that was helping them defray ostensibly costs. However, I do think that it's important to include, because we don't want to be silent on that issue if someone comes into our facility and they have made, let's say they have an exercise show, and they've made an arrangement with a local store, that they're going to essentially create commercial content around that, let's say donated equipment or something like that. We don't want to be silent on that kind of issue, because the intent for this content is that it is not commercial. And then just the other piece in here that I want to call out is that we do address the record retention that's related to these documents specifically. So those are the two key things that I want to call out. With that, I'll try to answer your questions.
Thank you. Mr. Shamir, anything else?
I would just like to make a comment. Thank Mr. Rua and his team, the Communication and Technology Commission, as well as Mr. Ebert, on helping pulling this document together, and it's been a very thorough job, and everyone has worked diligently. Thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Mayor?
Yes, thank you. I just want to point out that I believe we are one of the few communities that offer the opportunity for residents to create their own shows, correct?
That's correct. There are a few other, what they call PEG stations in the area. PEG stands for Public Education in Government. There's one in Hudson, Brunswick, I'm sure I'm going to forget some folks, but there are a few others, but there aren't many left. And it is really a great opportunity for residents to come in and share information. It's, we have some shows where we talk about the issues of the day. There really is actually an exercise show that we currently host. So it is a terrific opportunity to open to Avon Lake residents, adult Avon Lake residents.
So this is really an extension of the ability for our residents to exercise their First Amendment rights, as does Mr. Phillips and Mr. Zimmerman.
They have a regular show on the station.
So they have been able to exercise their First Amendment rights through the administration of this program, correct?
They have, yes. And actually, they just recently filmed two episodes, I believe Mr. Phillips made reference to that earlier, and I guess there's going to be a third installment soon.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Mr. Shamir?
You know, digging through information, I realize that Mr. Zuber has been instrumental in this effort, so I'd like to also thank him as well. Thank you.
Yeah, he also has been one of our regular community producers.
This is something that members of the Cable Commission back in 1992 had come to talk to me about, creating this public access station. And today, it's basically the technology hub for the community. So it's one of those great things that, hopefully, as the mayor said, and I was going to bring it up in further readings, that anybody in the community come and tape their own TV show, and I think it's a great thing for our town.
On any topic, if I could, yeah, if on any topic. So one time I had a show that was called Getting to Know You, and when I was an early, young councilperson, I wanted to be able to reach out to the community, and it's really hard unless somebody has a complaint for you to be able to obtain their comments. So I started bringing people in, I was interviewing them, and I was taking people on to locations. So most of my show was outside of the studio, and it was a way of interacting with the community. And I wish I had something like this, because sometimes we would have to dig through to see if, are we allowed to do this? Are we allowed to do that? And this makes it very easy. Thank you very much, Mr. Ebert and Mr. Rua.
So the other function that the station serves is we do partner with local churches to broadcast church services for those who can't leave the home. We also are frequently at city events, and sometimes those events are recording the moment, other times there are speakers, and so we really like to get out in the community and showcase some of the great things the city of Avon Lake has to offer.
So I would like to brag on your department a little bit. So not only do you have community television, but every single one of your employees are degreed in their specialty, whether it's videography, or it has to do with illustrations. And they're able to help organizations here in Avon Lake to be able to put together their signage, and if they have an event, they help them to create the flyer, the new flyers that we have here about city council was because of the help of not only the council staff, but also your staff, Stephanie, yourself, and others. And it's a great product. I just want to say thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. You're a great team. There is also actually a bulletin board service for those residents who would like to get information out with an organization, let's say, and they want to get information out, but they're not comfortable on camera.
So, Mr. Shamir, oh, I see another hand down there, Mr. Cos?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that we're talking about creating of television shows. It's not just for cable. I think the public should know that you also post those shows on the streaming service, so that way they're able to be seen, as a lot of people watch programming now through streaming, through their phones, through their iPads and such like that. So you guys have advanced, it's not just the cable channels. You produce them, and they're available to be viewed in different formats.
We take the cope or create once published everywhere approach to our content. Thank you for bringing that up. In addition to stations on breeze-lined spectrum, we do also have a free Avon Lake television app, where you can watch all that same content anywhere you go. And it is also, that content is also available on the city's website. These meetings are live streamed on the city's Facebook page, and we also post to YouTube these conferences. There's plenty of places to go to see government in action, and see that transparency in government.
Thank you. Mr. Shamir?
So the intention is to go through three full readings, and ensure that everyone understands the rules and regulations associated with Avon Lake City TV. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming up. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on now to Ordinance Number 25-163. Mrs. Rossmarin, read by title only.
An ordinance adopting a job description for the position of actor/operator in the Public Works Department, and establishing their qualifications and duties for said position, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Smith?
Thank you. I move for the suspension of the rule requiring three readings.
Mrs. Rossmarin, the roll?
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
Mr. Arnold?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh?
Yes.
Ms. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Thank you. It's passed. Mr. Smith?
Thank you. Yes, this was moved out of our Human Resources Committee this evening, and sets this forth as an emergency due to our need and obligations under the collective bargaining agreements that we have, and to make sure that we adequately staff the Public Works Department in order to provide optimal service to the residents of Avon Lake.
Very good. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Rossmarin, the roll?
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
Mr. Arnold?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh?
Yes.
Ms. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Thank you. This is passed. Mrs. Rossmarin, read by title only, Ordinance Number 25-164.
An ordinance adopting a job description for the position of sign shop operator in the Public Works Department, and establishing the qualifications and duties for said position, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Smith?
Thank you. I move for the suspension of the rule requiring three readings.
Mrs. Rossmarin, the roll?
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
Mr. Arnold?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh?
Yes.
Ms. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Thank you. It has passed. Mr. Smith?
Thank you. I move for the passage of Ordinance, Ordinance 25-164 as emergency measure.
In discussion?
Thank you. Similar to the last ordinance, this came through Human Resources tonight, and we're doing it as emergency in order to, in regard to our obligations under collective bargaining agreements, and to make sure that the Public Works Department can provide optimal service to the residents of Avon Lake.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Mrs. Rossmarin, the roll?
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
Mr. Arnold?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh? Ms. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Thank you. This is passed. Mrs. Rossmarin, read by title only, Ordinance Number 25-165.
An ordinance authorizing the emergency repair and replacement of boiler gaskets at the safety center, and declaring an emergency.
I move for suspension of the rule requiring three readings. Mrs. Rossmarin?
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
Mr. Arnold?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh?
Yes.
Ms. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Thank you. This is passed. I move for passage of Ordinance Number 25-165. And in discussion, as we have stated, there's an emergency situation, the more gaskets have blown, and they need to be repaired or replaced along with the piping. These are boiler gaskets at the safety center. The council has determined that the quotation submitted by ABC Piping Company of Brooklyn Heights, Ohio, is the best and lowest responsive quotation, and is acceptable to council, and the amount is not to exceed $39,000. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Rossmarin, the roll?
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
Mr. Arnold?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh?
Yes.
Ms. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Thank you. This is passed. Mrs. Rossmarin, read by title only, Ordinance Number 25-166.
An ordinance to rezone permanent parcel number 04-00-006-135-071 from B to General Business District to R 1A Single Family Residence District, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Smith?
Yes, this is the first reading of Ordinance Number 25-166, and was discussed in my planning commission report.
Thank you. And your intention, sir?
Is to have three readings on it.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, at this point in time, we have concluded our legislation. Is there any miscellaneous business and announcements? Mr. Cos?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I want to take a moment to thank the sellout and record-breaking attendance that we had for this year's 12th Annual Boo by the Woods and Trail of Haunted Tales. This was our 12th year doing this event, and as I just said, it was, again, another sellout, and it was the largest crowd that we've ever seen. The guests from members of the library staff that were there that have seen this, and also the other members of the organizers, was that we were probably pushing about 4,000 people, which is, like I said, the largest that we've ever had. And I think it goes back to the type of dedication, and the volunteers and the people that helped to put this together. So I'd like to mention their names very briefly here, because they do deserve recognition for this event. Our Boo Crew, which is our main group of the organizers, Mr. William Rutker, who's recently left the Avon Lake Public Library, has been a huge supporter of this event since he arrived at Avon Lake, and then he has now since departed, but without him, this event does not become what it is. He was here for almost all of the planning and buildup to this event, so thank you, William. Shay Altmont, Sybil Wendling, Samantha Passa, Aaron Fatch from our Park and Rec Department, Jackie Hoffman from our Park and Rec Department, Frank Mamanna, and Ryan Muckerhide, who are the two gentlemen that are in charge of setting up the sets and the scenes and the dialogue for the woods. Brian Salco and Brandy Villanueva, who are the two that set up the masterminds, the evil masterminds behind the haunted library and basement. Want to thank the Avon Lake Drama Club for their participation, the Avon Drama Club, Mighty Goliath Productions, our Avon Lake Public Works, which did a hell of a job putting this together. Thank you. Tell your guys thank you so much for all the efforts that they did. Avon Lake Police Department as well, too, were on hand, making sure this was a safe environment, and the Avon Lake Fire Department, which were also on hand for some inspections. But overall, there was an army of volunteers that helped to put this on, and the weather cooperated perfectly, and we had a great turnout for this event. So it's because of all of the people, all of the effort that they put into it, we were able to put on such an amazing event for the residents of Avon Lake. So thank you all, and we're going to take two months off, and then we will start planning in January for Boo by the Woods 13. So thank you to the city of Avon Lake.
Well done, well done. Anybody else with any miscellaneous news, business? Okay, seeing none. We have a need for an executive session. Mr. Cos?
Thank you. I move that in compliance with Ohio Revised Code Section 121.22G1, council will adjourn to executive session to discuss employment of a public official. And ORC 121.22G2, council will adjourn to executive session to consider the purchase